Administrator Cornwall Sherwood in Charlottetown. And then we also have councillor Verdu's out of town. Councillor Dron's here, councillor Duffy, councillor Yankoff, councillor MacLeod, councillor Ramsey. Okay, call to order. Now, just have to give a, just sit back, relax. I'm gonna have a couple of, uh... Statements to make. March is Kidney Month and, uh... Uh, 2021, uh, kidney disease was the 10th leading cause of death in Canada. One of them received a kidney transplant in 2021 compared to five in 2020. And 11 patients are waiting for a kidney transplant. Short-term financial assistance, uh, assistance request increased significantly in 2021 with 141 islanders receiving close to $27,000. Last year, the Atlantic branch of the Canadian, uh, of the Kidney Foundation of Canada, the only national health charity serving the needs of people living with kidney disease, provided close to $16,000 in financial assistance to islanders and their families with kidney disease. March is Kidney Month and on March 20, on March 10th, 2022 was Grow Kidney Day. The theme is Bridge the Knowledge Gap to Better Kidney Care. And we did raise the flag on March the 10th. And in attendance was Annie Boyer. And Annie is a 40-year volunteer with the Prince Albert Island Kidney Foundation. And Alfredo Farish was also a part of that flag raising ceremony. As mayor and council, I'm pleased to say that we recognize in March as Kidney Month in the city of Charlottetown. We urge all citizens to become, citizens become more aware of your kidney health and learn about the role your kidneys play in your body and the kidney disease warnings that sounds to look for, as well as the awareness of organ donation registry. The tower at Charlottetown City Hall is lit, uh, magenta on March 10th, 2022. And the Kidney Foundation flag was raised at City Hall the same morning. And if you are looking for more information, please visit kidney.ca. I know that a former mayor of this city did experience and suffered from kidney disease. That was Mayor John Jack Ready. And I know that his family experienced the trials of, of that disease. And just another announcement, April 7th, 2022 is Green Shirt Day. So next month, April 7th, is Green Shirt Day for organ donor awareness and registration. Green Shirt Day was created in memory of Logan Boulay. And Logan was a member of the Humboldt Broncos who tragically lost his life the day after the devastating bus crash. After his passing, his parents, Bernardine and Toby Boulay, donated his organs, saving the lives of six Canadians. In the days and weeks that followed, Logan Boulay's story inspired more than 150,000 Canadians to register to be organ donors in what came to be known as the Logan Boulay Effort. To date, this is the most significant number of Canadians registering to become organ donors in Canadian history, due to one event. Green Shirt Day honors and recognizes all the victims and families of the fatal crash and continues Logan's legacy by inspiring Canadians to register as organ donors. The tower at City Hall will be lit green to acknowledge this event. And we will be encouraging all staff to wear green to show their support. And for more information, visit greenshirt.ca. And following the green theme, this Thursday is March 17th. City Hall will be raising the Republic of Ireland flag in recognition of St. Patty's Day. And also our bell tower will be lit in green. Those are the announcements. You're like a school principal.
You do.
Never was one. Okay, declarations of conflict of interest, any declarations?
Seeing none.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you, councillor Ramsey. Approval of agenda? Approved by councillor Ramsey, second by councillor MacLeod. All those in favor? Okay, and councillor Bernard, yay?
Yay.
Councillor McKay?
In favor.
Councillor Twill?
In favor.
Okay, we have adoption of previous draft minutes, regular meeting of council, February 17th, 2022. Special meeting of council, February 28th, 2022. Moved to adopt the minutes. Moved by councillor Ramsey, second by councillor Duffy. All those in favor? Councillor Bernard?
Yay.
Councillor McKay?
In favor.
Councillor Twill?
In favor.
Okay. Business arising out of the minutes of February 15th, regular monthly meeting of council and special meeting of council, February 28th, 2022. Seeing none. So we can move on to the agenda. So I'm gonna go to councillor MacLeod first. And he's just signing something there for Mr. Kelly.
Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Councillor MacLeod.
So, uh, thank you, everybody. Welcome back into chambers again. Nice to be here. Uh, the planning heritage committee, uh, met on Friday, February 24th. Uh, a copy of the plans and heritage committee minutes are included in your package. Uh, the planning board met on Monday, March 7th. Copies of the planning board reports and minutes are included in the package as well. The heritage board committee met on Wednesday, March 2nd. Copies of the heritage board reporter or minutes are included. And the design review board did not meet in February, therefore the heritage board minutes, your worship. Uh, the formal housing advisory committee met on Tuesday, February 15th. The, uh, reports and minutes are also attached. Uh, we have six resolutions forward for consideration and I believe, uh, one second read. Thank you very much, your worship. Are you answering the questions again? Thank you.
Any questions on councillor MacLeod's report?
I do, your worship.
Councillor Bernard?
Thank you. Uh, councillor MacLeod, thank you very much. I know senior minister, there was discussion on the update on the pool covers. Thank you and your committee for that. The only concern I have is, uh, I guess it's quite a while we asked, we asked to have this review. In fact, back in September, I think I asked the manager to put this on the agenda. Good to see it out there now, but it's been over a month. And we have some people that are looking to see if they can go with a hardcover pool cover. Um, so it's getting late. I guess what we were asking for all along was the possibility of having amendment, an amendment, and the two, or bylaw that allows for just a fence. And I think, uh, one of the things I'll make comment on is, is in Europe, in the summer, is the first bullet, uh, is, is right off. That there's a lot of new products and technologies. The new products provide more solid, rigid cover and locking mechanism. And I think this particular person that's asking for this, um, they live at the peripheries of, uh, the boundaries, uh, Broadway Path, uh, they have an acre of wood at last. Fence really wouldn't do them a lot of good. That's why they're looking for the pool cover. So they're also really looking for the possibility of various. Understand, defense in a lot of situations, defense is, is, is quitting. Uh, but I also recognize that when people are away from their homes, that the fence is, is not a stopgap. Anybody can open up a gate or leave a gate open or fly, climb a fence. What these people are looking for, and there's starting to be a number crop up around Charlottetown, is the safety of having it closed, similar to a garage door. I think you all have the picture of the set of pieces. So it's remote activated, no different than your garage door. It holds them all the way. Uh, you can lock it, you can coat it. So if you're away, there's no getting it open, it's code block. I think some of these people that are asking for this, you know, it's security for their family and, and you know, if they thought this was safer, they're putting up a fence, they wouldn't be looking for this. And, and I guess what I've been asking planning and heritage to look at is adding an option for an amendment to be able to have these people in certain situations. No different than you for other amendments, whether your house is, is beyond, uh, deeper into the lot or closer to the road or variants allowed to, uh, flows out the number of feet that you need for a garage to be able to put a garage up. If you don't have the required feet, there's obviously variants to apply to. And that's what, that's what chief's been asking for, this family's been asking for. And that's what I've been asking for. I think it makes sense. I think we can't bury our heads in the sand with new technology to deal with. Understand, planning is very, I mean, the, the planning staff, we've got their head buried. There's more stuff, there's more building up there than, than ever in the history of Charlottetown. Probably, you know, obviously we're gonna need more staff. I think that's probably in the, the operational, well, just anyway. I'm assuming that's why this was locked so long. Uh, but if we needed to do, we need a couple of answers. And I think that, uh, when you research it and look into this, there's a lot of good reasons why this can work in a lot of situations. And I think that, that variance needs to be added to that by, it can't be just a fence and then bury your head in the sand. I think there's situations where this would work. This particular one, in my opinion, uh, it works years. You can, you can start trying to put a fence up on between the trees and so on. And it, this doesn't make a lot of sense. Pool cover, uh, to me, it makes a lot of sense, especially when you're, when you're away and you don't have to worry about other people getting into your pool. So, uh, thanks for bringing it up. I'm hoping that, that it can be moved on, hoping council can agree that we look at adding a, uh, an opportunity to apply for a variant to be able to put a hardcover pool, install a hardcover pool. Thank you.
Councillor MacLeod?
Thank you very much, councillor Bernard. Uh, I think, uh, um, you would mention, I think it was, uh, well over a year ago. This is, I think, under councillor Duffy's reign in this chair. It's been around for a while and I do appreciate your patience. Uh, I, I think where we're stuck, I guess, and I'll let Alex, uh, give a little more, uh, more of a in-depth conversation on it, but it's the standardization of, of the pool. You know, we, not only do we have a concern about this one, it's about what happens if one comes from some other part of the world that doesn't meet standards. And, um, and in most cases, uh, it says in the report, the provinces take, take a foothold in this, uh, just not municipality. And, uh, so far, we haven't had much luck. But, uh, I know I did ask Alex to, to look into legal on this and, uh, I'll be quiet now. Let Alex finish the conversation.
Thank you again, councillor Bernard, for the question. Mr. Forbes?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, your worship. Look, well, staff has spent a considerable amount of time on this issue. We researched this and we spent a lot of time on it. And it's a lot more complicated than it appears, like a lot of planning issues. It's not about a fence, it's about the safety of, uh, neighbors in relation to that swimming pool. The primary issue for planning staff is I'm a planner. I deal with the placement of structures. I don't deal with safety. These pool covers, there's thousands of pool covers. So the only place that the staff were able to find out that any, any standard on a pool cover was Alberta, the province of Alberta. They created, they have a much more robust, uh, uh, system in Alberta for all kinds of safety issues. This is akin to the National Building Code. The National Building Code is the National Research Council reviews amendments to the National Building Code for years, for years before they adopt them, because it has to be bulletproof when you adopt the new standard. So the issue for planning staff is, it's not about the fence. The issue is who defines the standard on the pool cover? There's thousands of pool covers. Building inspectors do not deal with pool covers, they deal with the National Building Code. The fire department deals with the fire code. If you go to court, you have to say, we turned something down because it didn't need a standard. But planners do not create standards. So, uh, we spent a lot of time on this. We told somebody else that wanted this proposal, if they wanted to bring it to the province and the province wanted to adopt, uh, some kind of a safety code and they would define the standard, uh, all municipalities would follow suit. The province clearly indicated that they didn't want to do that, so we came back to, 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 uh, planning staff. So, uh, the long and the short, your worship, I don't think planning staff are qualified. Uh, there's, there's liability issues for adjacent property owners. Uh, there's the, you know, I think you yourself, your worship, mentioned the chief medical health officer has some concerns over fencing around pools, the Red Cross is involved. This is a much bigger issue than a fence. So, uh, you know, I guess the long and the short of it is that we've taken it as far as we can, if the province wants to pick up the ball and define that standard. Because again, uh, there's no, there's very little in the city that we inspect, that, that it isn't inspected to a standard, but, uh, uh, staff at the city don't define the standard. That's the issue. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, your worship, I have a question.
Go ahead. To Mr., is councillor MacLeod or Mr., Mr. Forbes?
I'll go through the chair. He can go to, Mr. Forbes, if you'd like. I guess my, one of my questions is, and I actually, I'll have to say, I guess, for me, you know, we're talking about the problems. The problem's not involved across the island with, with fences. There's nowhere ever in this town that requires fencing on the pool. It's private property and the province will set it to your property you deal with. Um, so the city at some point on their own must have brought in the fencing, which I'm not saying is not a good idea. But, you know, to now look at, uh, newer technologies and we're saying, well, we really, we really can't deal with that because we don't have the expertise and the province doesn't want to deal with it. Uh, so it basically sounds to me like it's gonna fall on deaf ears unless either we hire a consultant or someone to come back to get the standards that you need. But I do think that the city of Charlottetown needs to look at it. You can't ignore it because approximately five women in the city now that have the pool covers. And I do think that it has to be ignored and, uh, it doesn't, it can't ignore it, I mean. And I don't think it's that difficult to come up with standards that if you're going to be putting in a hard pool cover, here's a standard we require in order for the city Charlotte to allow this to go ahead. The liability issues, uh, I know the, the, the family that I'm talking to has technically spoken to their insurance company and their insurance company doesn't see any issues. And their insurance company is telling them that the city of Charlottetown requires a fence. As far as insurance to us, for liability insurance, we don't see, whether it's a fence or the pool cover, we don't see that as an issue. We'll be insuring your reverse. So I don't know if we're making this a little more difficult than it needs to be or not, but I, I do think that if there's new technologies out there, I think you need to be investigating. I mean, maybe over years ago, all the people that were climbing up onto the Simmons building and then jumping into pool, whereas, you know, you look back at pool covers, what a difference that would have made years ago. So, you know, this is something that the family wants for safety. Uh, I, I understand that Daddy Shell's most deaths in pools are, are happening within the fence. Uh, so if I were to do one, would I want a pool cover? Definitely. Because I know I can lock it and I can secure it and I can coat it. And I just don't think this needs to go away. I think that we, the city of Charlotte needs to come up with an answer because it's not gonna go away. Every one of us is gonna have, have residents in our area that are gonna be asking me this at some point.
Councillor MacLeod?
Whether you're gonna be consulting to deal with it, I don't know if it needs to be dealt with.
Councillor MacLeod, do you want to yield to, or do you want to?
I'll yield to, uh, Mr. Forbes.
Mr. Forbes?
Uh, your worship, look, uh, when planners review any kind of standard, we, you know, we, we do some kind of a cross-country scan. We usually look into land and Canada, uh, to get an idea if, uh, had somebody else tackled this. So, uh, at the time, we looked at this initially, we, we asked that very question. If you can point us in the direction of a municipality who has made this change, other than through Alberta, which came through the province, we would take a look at it. But we couldn't find that. But, you know, your worship's been on the National XM, there's, there's 1,500 municipalities in the country. I can't say that somebody out there doesn't have one, it's just that we couldn't find it. So, uh, again, it's, it, it's beyond the planning staff to make that recommendation to council if you want to do something else. I just, uh, we, we discussed this a lot and I, I don't want to raise any expectation that we can take it any further. Uh, but, uh, but I'm not saying that there isn't a standard out there, we just couldn't find it. And it, it takes reams of time to do research on these type of things. And there's, there's a myriad of things that we were working on. So we took it as far as we could, your worship, it's up to the council what they want to do. But I don't think it's gonna be planning, the planning department that will be making that kind of a recommendation to you could be somebody else that's more qualified, but wouldn't be us. Thank you.
So councillor MacLeod, can you answer?
Well, I think maybe the, um, from, I think my opinion would be, would be perhaps to pursue through our legal, uh, Mr. Kelly, if you could, perhaps, uh...
I can't hear him.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I'm just saying, maybe we could have our legal, uh, associates for the city look into that as to what, uh, what possibilities there could be of, and doing some work on, on just finding out just what would be the, the work in standardizing a pool cover.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think this is gonna go away. I can, I don't think that if this is a safe alternative, some, some, some jurisdictions, I, I, I think it definitely has to be looked into. And I, and I understand what Alex was saying on time. I know this will take a lot of time and I know they don't, you know, with the pressures they have in planning now, that's why I'm suggesting that possibly it goes out to a consultant to get the information that we need. But I do think that it has to be dealt with.
Yeah.
And, uh, city worship, uh, I don't know if I need to put a resolution or whatever, but if, if, if we can move ahead in that direction to be able to get an answer, uh, for this question, I think it has to be looked into.
Councillor McKay, did you want to say something?
Your worship, yeah, I just wanted to clarify because I, I did sit in on the discussion and I just want to recall that I was understanding because there was the discussion had. But it was, I think, uh, councillor Bernard, the issue wasn't the, any of this, it was that the fence comes under planning only because it's a structure, a fence, a fence structure, which falls under planning regulations. But the concern that kept being discussed at our committee level was safety. And that was, we're out, and correct me, Alex, if I'm wrong, but were you were feeling confident to, to make any recommendations based on the safety? The fence only, fence, yes, because fence falls under the planning regulation, but the safety of pool was bigger than that. And I thought that Tina maybe was in on that too. And maybe she could provide a little bit more information on where we were going.
Deputy CAO, do you have anything to add? Yeah, she signed up. Yeah. Deputy CAO?
Tina, are you there?
Okay, she might have stepped out.
Anyway, that's, that's fine. I just, you know, thank you for that.
Can you hear me? Tina, are you, yes, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Just councillor Bernard, I, I think we're gonna get our deputy CAO just to give us a little bit of... But you'll have to turn off your mics.
And yes, we can't hear you, Tina. Just stand by, we're gonna see if they can turn off their mics.
Okay. Please turn off your mics, please. Sounds like room space.
For anybody not speaking, could they turn off their mics, please, so we can get this, uh, this information out? For those who are not speaking, please turn off your mics. Just go to mute.
Mr. Kelly? I think that someone has the live cast going on, the live stream and, no, one of, one of the, one of the participants that are on. If any was, if any of you have the live stream on, you have to turn it off. There, or mute it.
Just go mute.
There. Mute the live stream.
We don't even have this two years. I mean, rounding this out like the next meeting, because I... So Tina, if you're there, go ahead, please. It sounds like it's clear.
There, is that better?
Oh, yes.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So, just, just to follow up on what Alex was saying, the discussion was centering around the issue that is being experienced by a handful of private citizens. And it relates to two things. So the fence itself is something that falls under the planning issue and it deals with our bylaw and whether or not somebody is acting in compliance with that bylaw. But then you have the whole other issue of the safety of utilizing a pool cover because they think that that's safer than having a fence in place. It's really not under planned to deal with that. I, quite frankly, if somebody doesn't want to comply with our fence bylaw, then they're welcome to expend their personal resources to provide the city with a legal opinion for our review. I, I don't think that it's appropriate to spending any more time or resources of the city to try to deal with safety issues for private citizens. It has absolutely nothing to do with planning or the bylaw. If somebody wants to go down that route, I would strongly recommend not to be paying our general counsel to engage in that kind of research. I think we have far more important, far more far-reaching things to deal with. And if somebody does not want to comply with the fence bylaw because they feel that the pool cover is safer, they are more than welcome to use the pool cover and put the fence in. Thank you.
Okay, so councillor Bernard and councillor MacLeod, I think what we'll do, we'll, we'll take this back to the planning committee. I know that, just one second, hold on. And I know the deputy CAO has stated another opinion that it's more a private issue, but I think we can look at the issue. Is that all right with you?
Yes, perfect, yeah.
Councillor Bernard, I, I know we can go a little further on this, but we will bring it back to the planning and development standing committee.
Well, certainly, that sounds like, uh, what we're being recommended by the CAO, this is a waste of time.
Yeah, no, the recommendation has been taken into, under consideration, but I believe that councillor MacLeod, are you all right to go back?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's worth, it's worth pursuing, uh, taking the deputy's, uh, opinion and, uh, just, uh, analyze that and then, uh, and go forward from there.
Okay.
I get, one, one last comment is, you know, the whole, the whole reason this is here is because these people want the safest alternatives that they can put in. And they don't feel the fence is safe enough.
Okay.
And that's why I always might have looked at and whether, whether we need to get a consultant or whatever. I think at the end of the day, if people could see technologies catching up and that there's safer alternatives out there, it's just a matter of, of what those alternatives are gonna be for the variants that the city of Charlottetown wants to, wants to put in.
Clearly, clearly, we, we clearly understand what you're saying. And this is an argument that came up when councillor Duffy was the, the chair of planning and development. So, no, we will, we will carry it out at the next planning committee?
We'll pursue it.
Okay. Councillor Yankoff, did you have something to say or add, please?
I just wanted a tiny bit of clarity, why, why is going back to planning if it's not a planning issue?
If it's, we'll, we'll find out where the issue belongs.
So shouldn't we find out where it belongs before we send it back?
So do you want to recommend that the CAO and the deputy CAO look into that? Where should you go to?
Well, we're just gonna keep talking about it and not getting any action items if we just keep sending it back. But why don't we, I mean, councillor Bernard is already bringing it up again because, I mean...
It's an issue for him.
His residents are asking.
Yeah.
So if it's not planning, then it's, I feel like so...
Like I stated earlier, I think the best bet is to take the deputy's comments, uh, she does have legal background, uh, but run it through our solicitors for clarity and then move on from there. How would that be?
Well, just one last comment, your worship.
Go ahead.
The, the family that I'm dealing with, you know, when they asked us to have our programs because they wanted to do construction this, this, this spring, for the summer. Um, and, you know, councillor Yankoff's right, I mean, I don't want to belch it around and around and, you know, and not have an end to this. Uh, she's been very patient, she, she, the family's been very much, I want to go by the rules.
Yeah.
And, you know, if, if, if we could put the hardcover pool in, that would be our preference, but I would rather go by the rules. But now to put a fence in, you're gonna be tearing up all roots through the trees and so on, to put a, to put a fence in around the pool. And when you go to the situation and look at their side, it makes sense what she's requesting. Plus she has her neighbors that are outside. She spoke to all her neighbors and her neighbors are outside. But she does want, she wants to work within the rules that the city sets out.
Yeah.
And I think if we just, if, if we're gonna just keep belching it from, from, uh, one meeting to another and not really coming up with an answer, she's looking for an answer.
Yeah, okay.
At the end of the day.
We'll get the CAO to, yeah. Councillor Bernard, councillor MacLeod and councillor Yankoff, we'll get the CAO to look into what, what other jurisdictions have done with this issue. There has to be something out there that we can photocopy, not just Alberta. Is that all right, Mr. Kelly? Okay. It's, can I just say one?
Yeah, sure.
I forgot to mention this in January, uh, councillor MacLeod, but at, at the end of December 31st, 2021, and I can understand, uh, Alex and the department, how much work is going on down there, there was 160 million dollars in building and construction dollar values. Like, that's ranking second to last year.
Yeah.
So I, I know the department is working very hard, but that's the highest in the history of this city dating back to 1855. So it's, they're working hard. they're working hard, working really hard, and...
And if you don't mind me saying, they're understaffed as well, Your Worship.
What's that?
I said, and they're understaffed.
Yeah, so were you in the mayor, mayor's office. We're trying to get staff there, too.
Well, you're good, yeah.
Can we go with the first resident? Anything else, sir?
We're good to go.
Okay. You want to go with the first, like, resolution?
Yeah, first resolution.
Your Worship, moved by Counsel McCloud, sent by Counsel Yankoff, that the request for the major variance to increase the maximum height of the building in the C2 zone from 14.9 meters to, uh, to an average height of approximately 19.7 meters. In order to add an additional floor on the former apartment building at 2022 Lower Malpec Road, P I D 388322, uh, P I D 696989, and P I D 388330, and lot consolidation of 20 to 22 Lower Malpec Road, P I D numbers 388322, 696989, and 388330 into one parcel. Be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, a traffic study and watershed management plan being provided prior to a building permit being issued, and signing of a development agreement, Your Worship.
So the resolution's on the floor, do you want to?
Question?
Do you want to say?
I have a question, Your Worship.
Yeah, just one second. Counsel McCloud, do you want to address it first?
I will. Please, thank you very much, Your Worship, but, uh, thank you for reading that, Peter. Uh, I just, uh, I need, need the rest of council and the colleagues here to understand that, um, the email that came in today shouldn't be considered. Uh, there was a certain time limit, uh, and that, that particular resident did have their letter in, so it was considered. So I just need you to understand that before, before we go any further in discussion that, that, that process has been, we've been down that road. Just wanted to have a way to know. Thank you.
Question, Counsel Yankoff, then Counsel Twill, and then Counsel Bernard. Counsel Yankoff?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. And, um, the, I was referring to the letter that the same person who sent an email today from March 2nd in our package. I was just reviewing the package over the weekend, and I noticed that they had, um, pointed out in there, and that's one thing we haven't mentioned in the resolution, and that was the appropriate land use buffer. And I, I don't know if this needs to be deferred to ensure that we have that put in there, or it just needs to have a friendly amendment. I just think it's important that we address that, and Counsel McCloud mentioned that as well.
You would add a friendly amendment?
Well, he decided it was important to address the land use buffer.
So, I mean, the buffer, the buffer was mentioned within the report. Um, I think it's important that the buffer is there. Um, you know, the subdivision is a fair piece away from where the actual buildings going ahead. Uh, but I will refer to Alex here a minute on the buffer. Um, but, um, you know, some of the other points of that letter about March 2nd, you know, uh, the traffic is going to be addressed, um, and so will the, the water, uh, behind McNeil's Pond, which will be done through, to the government. So these processes will be done, and there'll be no permit given as usual, right, until these, uh, studies are done. It might seem from the outside that, why didn't it get done in between the design review? And, but this is the process, it goes through each of these processes. And before any, any permits will be signed, these, these studies will be done, and done by the appropriate people, and analysis will be done as well. Uh, Alex, would you like to start with the buffer, please? Thank you.
Uh, Your Worship, uh, yeah, I, I, I think that's totally appropriate. You can, you can add an initial term and condition that the appropriate, uh, land use buffer be provided. I think it's in the zoning bylaw anyways, but it doesn't hurt to reinforce that.
Correct.
Uh, but the buffer can be, in, in the definition of the zoning bylaw, the buffer can be a fence. There's a number of different ways you can buffer. It could be trees, could be a hedge, but, uh, I, I don't think that if you want to put that into a friendly amendment, that would be very clear as to the intent of council, so, uh, that would be...
So Counsel Yankoff, do you want to add, or add a friendly amendment to the resolution to ensure that there's a, a buffer and a tree buffer?
I do, Your Worship. Like, initially, I thought about deferral, but it was more discussion in your, um, thinking of this. As long as that, everything else has been addressed in, in the letter from March 2nd, so yes, if...
Where it says, be approved, subject to following conditions, traffic study and watershed management plan being provided prior to a building permit being issued, and second bullet would be?
An appropriate land use buffer.
An, an, an appropriate land use buffer.
Is there more deposition to that, Your Worship, or just for greater clarity?
I would think perhaps according to the letter, there, you know, the resident does, does mention, uh, a tree buffer, that the can be used there, and some of it was removed because of another project. I would suggest that we put that buffer back. As, you know, it's not, you know, a piece is missing near his home, you know, a piece you want to definitely add back in again.
So we'll have to, so the friendly amendment's on the floor. I thought we can just add it, too. Do you have to vote in that?
You have to, uh, vote on the amendment, too.
Okay, so let's clarify the, uh, friendly amendment. Could you repeat that again, Counsel Yankoff or Counsel McCloud? What do you want in the friendly amendment? So we write it down.
So an appropriate land use buffer, um, that replaces the extensive buffer of trees that had been taken out before.
Okay, great. Okay, so that's, yeah, so that's the friendly amendment on the floor. Do you have a second, or? Okay, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a second. So let's vote on, so the friendly amendment's on the floor. Any discussion on the friendly amendment?
I would just like to add that I think we need to look at the process moving forward from my perspective. Because his letter today, although we did see it already, made me think he wasn't wrong in some of these things being done before it gets to us in the first place.
Right. But I think the resolution will address, um, most of those concerns, correct, Counsel McCloud?
Yeah.
Okay. Question? Question, okay. Question on the friendly amendment. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Counsel Bernard, yea your name.
Aye.
Counsel McKay?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Okay. So back to the original resolution. So, uh, Counsel Twill, you were to speak on the original resolution, and then Counsel Bernard?
That's, that's correct. It's, it's regarding, um, it's regarding the study, the watershed study, and, and the impact from the development on McNeil's Pond. Can you tell me who's going to be conducting the study, and will the results of the study be forwarded on to City Council?
Counsel McCloud, want to yield?
Yeah, I'll yield to Mr. Forbes.
Mr. Forbes?
Mr. Forbes of Somerset.
Uh, Your, Your Worship, uh, in, in the case like this, there are people, there are professionals that understand the regu- provincial regulations dealing with, uh, you know, the wetlands, and they would do a study for us, and basically, same as a traffic study, basically indicate to staff, uh, that, uh, that the, the way that the development is being proposed is not going to compromise the provincial, uh, you know, wetland policy. So, so they, they would put their professional name to that, that the proposal that came in. So it's just, again, like a traffic study, we don't usually bring them back to, to council to, to review. They're, they're either, they're kind of like a yes/no thing. Either meets it or it doesn't, or we're, I'm not prepared to support it unless they do this additional thing. We would make sure that that happened.
And Counsel McCloud, do you want to follow?
I just, take your question.
I got another question.
Yeah, I know. Just one second.
I just, just your first one, Counsel Twill. Counsel, uh, the design shows clearly, uh, they, uh, plan on putting a buffer there in front of the watershed as well. Um, uh, those folks have learned their school on this, and are quite prepared to do whatever it takes for the, uh, for the project to go ahead with the watershed, uh, on top of their mind, for sure. Thank you.
Counsel, oh, yeah, Mr. Forbes?
Yeah, Your Worship, look, I just would like to point out that, you know, there's a lot going on in this application, but I just remind everybody, it's just for a variance. We typically do not have half of these. There's a development agreement attached to a variance, there's a traffic study attached to a variance, there's a land use, uh, uh, wetland study to a variance. Uh, and again, I mean, which is all fine, but, but the reality is, if, if he dropped the height, he would be doing it all, and a lot of these additional protections wouldn't be there. It's not like rezoning, rezoning is much more comprehensive in regard to what you would, you're going to request. So we, we've put in a pretty, pretty comprehensive, uh, uh, a number of protections, I think, on this case, but it's, it is different than a rezoning. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Yankoff, can he ask his second question? Or do you, can he ask his second question? Counsel Twill, can you ask your second question, and then we'll come back to Counsel Yankoff?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Alex, uh, for your response. So, planning staff will make that determination once, uh, the city retains, uh, uh, some of the expertise on, on the watershed and, and McNeil's Pond and what happens development. If, if it affects her, it doesn't affect it, and it has to meet the, the regulations with the province. Uh, so normal procedure is council's not updated after that. That's left to the hands with the planning department. Is that correct?
Mr. Forbes?
Uh, Your Worship, that is correct, but the city does not pay for that study. That's the applicant's responsibility, uh, to have that, uh, study paid for. But when you hire a professional and they sign their name on it, there's a lot of, there's a lot comes with signing your signature. So you better, they're, they're very astute to make sure that what they're signing off on is correct. Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Yankoff?
Thank you, Your Worship. And it was more so just a, a general observation from Mr. Forbes's comment that it is just only a major variance, and that if it wasn't for applying for the major variance, a lot of this stuff would have been able to be done without it. But the point is, it, it is a major variance, so therefore, it isn't done without it. So I just think we're just being respectful of, you know, following the process.
Counsel Bernard, I forgot you, and then Counsel Duffy. Did you want to say something? Do you have a question, Counsel Bernard?
Uh, maybe I can answer. I, I, just want to read the resolution. I'm just wondering, I think Alex, after the, uh, topic of this variance being approved, subject to the following conditions, traffic study, watershed management plan being provided prior to building permit being issued. I just wanted to know, the result of the traffic study and watershed management plan, would that come to council before this coming?
Mr. Forbes?
I think, I think if I read Alex right, he said basically yes or no answer from the traffic study or the watershed management plan?
Yeah, we, uh, Your Worship...
Mr. Forbes?
Yeah, staff would review those. I mean, it's, uh, again, they're, they're just highly technical documents, and at the end, it says, you know, yes or no. Uh, so, and if they say that if somebody, if they couldn't get that signed up by a professional, we wouldn't give a permit.
Yeah.
So again, it's, it's the same as when we ask for a traffic study. If the traffic study confirms, uh, that everything is okay, we issue the permit.
And you're the professionals.
And so, Alex, if it doesn't confirm that, do you want to make the not issue the building permit versus the back to council, or what happens in that case?
Yeah, we clearly wouldn't, we wouldn't issue the permit. Uh, and, you know, they may, they, they, they could appeal the fact that we didn't sign it, but, but the reality is, is that, you know, when you, and, and there's a development agreement signed there as well. You have to adhere to the requirements that are in the development agreement, and the reason there's a development agreement is because there's all of these additional studies, right?
Correct.
That needed to be reflected. And, uh, so, you know, it, there's some timing issues there. When you get a permit, that'll be embedded in the development agreement, and when it all has to be confirmed, and certain work has to be done. So there's a lot of protections on this particular approval.
And, and we added, uh, Yankoff, Counsel Yankoff, friendly amendment, buffers up. Correct.
So when you read, when you read this resolution now, the resolution we're voting on now is the one that has the amendment included in it?
He will have to read it over again.
No.
Yeah, that's all right. He's getting pretty good at it. Okay, Counsel Duffy?
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, I'm sitting here listening to all the to and fro back and forth and follow up with Counsel Bernard there. It's like, the gold, the gold, the gold medal here for the developer or the, the homeowner, the property owner, is the building permit. And, and nobody's getting anything, including the building permit, to all the conditions and terms and whatever are, are, are fulfilled type of thing. So asking about who's going to do the water study, are we going to get a copy of the water study? It's our business. It adds up to the, to the staff to sit back, wait till the work is done, make sure the work is done properly, and then issue the building permit. Nobody's getting a building permit till everything is satisfied. So we should just waste it 25 minutes on, on, yeah, on this.
And that includes, and that includes the signing of the development agreement, too, Mr. Kelly, correct? Yeah. That's, that's signed by the C A O's office and the office of the mayor. Okay, you ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Your Worship, there was this, uh, Speaker, Your Worship.
Who's on this, who, who asked?
Counsel Bernard, I think you're...
Counsel Bernard, did you ask another question? I think you wanted to say he was in favor of it.
No, I, I, no, that's okay.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Counsel Bernard, yea your name.
Yes.
Counsel McKay?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Eight zero. Can you read the next one, sir?
Your Worship, moved by Counsel McCloud, sent by Counsel Yankoff, that the request for a size specific exemption for the property located at 18 Park Street, P I D 365502. In order to convert the existing legal non-conforming commercial building, i.e. previously selling craft ink, into four-unit residential apartment building, be approved to proceed to public consultation, Your Worship.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Bernard, yea your name.
Yes.
Counsel McKay?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Okay, next one, sir.
Your Worship, moved by Counsel McCloud, sent by Counsel Yankoff, that the request to amend Appendix A, future land use map of the official plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Appendix G, zoning map of the zoning development bylaw from a single detached residential zone to the medium-density residential zone for a portion of 1B Palmer's Lane, P I D 275735. In order to construct a 12-unit apartment building, be approved to proceed to public consultation, Your Worship.
Just to put a public consultation. Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Bernard, yea your name.
In favor.
Counselor McKay, yea your name.
In favor.
Counsel Twill, yea your name. Yea?
In favor.
Okay, next one, sir.
Your Worship, moved by Counsel McCloud, sent by Counsel Yankoff, that the request to consolidate two parcels located at, I've wanted, sorry, located south of Water Street and Wayma Street, P I D number 825935, and 825950 into one parcel. In order to accommodate the transfer of ownership to the harbor authority, be approved, Your Worship.
Okay. Questions called by Counsel McCloud. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Counsel Bernard, yea your name.
In favor.
Counsel McKay, yea your name.
In favor.
Counsel Twill, yea your name.
In favor.
Okay, sir.
Your Worship, moved by Counsel McCloud, sent by Counsel Yankoff, that the lock consolidation of 64 Maple Avenue, P I D 393108, with a portion of 50 Maple Avenue, P I D 480475, be approved, subject to a final payment survey plan, Your Worship.
Okay. Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Bernard, yea your name.
In favor.
Counsel, uh, McKay, yea your name.
In favor.
Counsel Twill, yea your name.
In favor.
Moved by Counsel McCloud, sent by Counsel, Counsel Yankoff, that the lot consolidation of six properties at 3 Prince Street, P I D 825935, 335380, 335572, 335364, 335406, and 335398 into one large parcel be approved, subject to a final survey plan in a new perimeter description being registered, describing the odor boundaries of the consolidated parcels, Your Worship.
Questions called. Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Bernard, yea your name.
In favor.
Counsel McKay?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Your Worship, whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, P H dash Z D dot two dash oh five eight, as it pertains to fifth, sorry, to 85 Malpec Road, P I D 388181, as attached, was read and approved a first time on February 15th, 2022. Be it therefore resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Counsel McCloud, sent by Counsel, uh, Counsel Yankoff, Your Worship.
Shall I carry?
Yes, pass.
Okay. Counsel Bernard?
Aye.
Counsel McKay? Counsel Twill?
Aye.
Be resolved, Your Worship, that the said bylaw be now adopted, moved by Counsel McCloud, sent by Counsel Yankoff, Your Worship.
Shall I carry?
Yes, pass.
Counsel Bernard?
Aye.
Counsel McKay?
Aye.
Counsel Twill?
Aye.
Okay. Just one second, sir. That's it?
That's worship?
Your worship?
Just one second. Okay, sir. Counsel McCloud, as always, thank you very much for your report. Very well done, lots of discussion.
Your worship?
You have a question to ask the, Counsel Twill, you have a question to ask the Chair of Planning Development?
Counsel Bernard, nice.
Counsel Bernard, go ahead.
And it's just, it's just a comment, Your Worship, and through the, with all technology, uh, we just received a, uh, from the City of Chinilak, and their bylaws, uh, and their... we just received a, from the City of Chillicothe, and their bylaws, and their amendment to the bylaw, and it was done in 2011, and safety cover means a barrier to swimming pools which inhibits access to the contained body of water, and which is intended to be completely removed before entry of person into the water. Safety cover performance specifications means specification created by A S D M International under the fixed designation F 1346, safety covers and laboring requirements for all covers to swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs. Swimming pool, and it was hard to say what the swimming pools are, what the qualifications are, so this is not new. And so, great that this was brought up to me, and I can forward it to Counsel McLeod, and maybe I'll take it to his planning, but it starts off by the interpretation is, the building respecter means a person installing by council to administer and enforce the building code and related municipal bylaws. And it talks about the requirements for fence, or the pool cover, the type of pool cover it needs to be. So it's all there, Your Worship, this could just stay in the law time.
Thank you for the point of information, and please email it to our C A O, our Deputy C A O, and the Chair of Planning and Development, Counsel Terry McLeod. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to doing that, but it's not very live.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next report is, please, who's overseeing, please? Counsel Ramsey's doing about five reports. Come on, sir. Super Chair. Hey, Super Chair, you want to give your report?
Thank you, Your Worship. It'll be extra paid to him, I hope I wouldn't mind.
Well, you're getting, now you're getting $150 per day.
The project for an emergency service committee met February 22nd. Your minutes, the minutes are in your package. There are seven resolutions for your consideration. Any questions, we'll certainly try to answer, and the Chief of Police is here also, so he would, if I can't ask, he will certainly.
And Tim's online.
Pardon me?
And Tim's online.
Okay.
And the Deputy Chief of Fire is online.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Any, Counsel Yankoff, do you have a question to, could you stand there, please, because we just want to see your, we want to make sure you project your voice.
I just wondered, a question to the Chair. All of the resolutions are in there, are the identical resolutions from prior years where they encroached the notion of the city right away for them to have their summer decks? And I'm just wondering, in, in, in terms of, that it's all the same, but they couldn't have just been put into one resolution in terms of time? Because it, I mean, or even, I'm even curious why they are a resolution, because when they, each year that they get to have this, they have first right of refusal to keep applying year after year. So I don't even, I'm not exactly sure what my question is, but clarification, why this is even a resolution? If, if the, if the restaurant owners are already told the year before, that, that it's their spot until they're signed on to keep applying?
Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you for that question. It's a good question. I don't think they're tall here in the year, I would say, the Chief.
Do you want to yield to the Chief to ask him?
I'd like to yield to the Chief.
Okay. Chief, can you give us a background?
I'd have to reflect on the bylaw to get that exact answer, but there are some time limitations around their kind of perceived ownership of those spots from year to year. But I can certainly get the answer to provide more clarity, and back, back to committee.
But Chief, it relates to the bylaw. That's, that's what you're respecting by forwarding these resolutions. Counsel McLeod?
Just a quick question, and I could turbate myself, I guess, but are all, are, do they all have the same amount of parking space?
No.
I mean, no, that's probably why, you won't have to state how many spaces they do. Probably just my thoughts on it.
Counsel Duffy, you could have some background on this.
Yeah, no, I, I was on the weekend, that these are, these are renewed every two years. This, this resolution is to be approved to the end of 2024 season. They're not approved every year.
That's what Counsel Yankoff said.
But it says.
Every two years.
He approved to the end of 2024, subsequent to annual permit applications.
I think that might be a typo.
Chief? They're all the same.
You know, I think that's, I think that is correct. I think there are some variances, like there's a couple of years, but again, I'd have to reflect on the bylaw.
The long ones here, Chief, that are here in this binder are 2024.
So these will be for two years, Counsel? Yeah, Your Worship, I think Counsel Duffy's right, that there is, there is a couple of years, and I think, but they, there's 23 businesses that have patio solar, and machine to some.
Yeah. And Deputy, I think you were wrong, you were.
Chief.
You were the Deputy Chief back when we were discussing this the first time around with St. James Gate, when we provided that patio. That was one of the first?
Yes, Your Worship.
And there was a whole procedure that had to be put in place, because a lot of residents were not happy that parking spaces were being taken. So now we're up to what, 19?
23, I believe.
23. So, so at first, I know you were the Deputy, now you're the Chief, but it was quite controversial. But it's, it's paying off, because.
I mean, to be fair to you, Your Worship, it was extended when, when the COVID.
Oh, yes.
And things like that, so we're just sort of reviewing the whole thing right now and approve it.
Yeah.
Correct, Chief?
That's absolutely correct, yeah. It was an update, just in council to make some considerations for COVID and some extra square space, and, and that has continued on this year.
Okay. Other question? Counsel Yankoff?
No, I'm just intent, in terms of attention to detail, then, the resolution doesn't really be corrected, because it's not subject to annual permit application. It's bi-annual, and we're on that term, is already two years?
Yeah.
It's for two years.
Right, so it's not annual.
If, if, if I'm, Your Worship, I believe that.
Mr. Forbes? Mr. Forbes, legal counsel?
It needs to come back to council every two years for approval, but they still need a permit, because a permit itself doesn't go to council, but they would just apply in City Hall and get a permit.
Let the professionals do it.
Thank you for the clear explanation.
Any, any other questions to, to the Chair? No? Okay.
I yield.
Oh, Counsel Twill? You have two, you have, we do have the Deputy Chief of Fire also online?
Yes, we do, sir.
Counsel Twill, question?
Thank you, Your Worship. Considering the amount of needles that are on our city streets and showing up on people's properties, is a practice, is a practice still in place where residents that are following the Shell Town Police Department and the police will pick up the needles? Or has that been transferred to the Public Works Department? There's conflicting messages in the community.
Thank you for your question, Counsel Twill. I'll, I'll yield to the Police Chief, might have a better answer now. Thank you.
Sure, Your Worship, certainly we encourage anyone that's, that's, I think there's a public safety risk associated needles to call the police. However, we in turn are calling Public Works to dispose of that as a better use of police time. But so, I guess the answer's kind of in the middle there. You can call us directly, and we can direct it, and we're happy to deal with any public safety concerns. But in turn, at the end of the day, it is Public Works that's going to come and pick those needles up, and unless there's an officer that's right in the vicinity that can, that can deal with it. But we're trying to manage the best use of our, our police time, yeah.
Counsel Twill?
Just a follow-up, Your Worship.
Go right ahead, sir. You, you want to ask a question to the Chair?
So, so, okay, so, so now, you contact the Police Department, but in essence, it is the Public Works Department now responsible for picking up the needles. What I suggest is, I think we need to embark upon a communication strategy, and, and, you know, we have our communications people do up press releases, and maybe do some advertisements, notifying our residents as to what course of action they should take with respect to needles. Needles are now showing up in some apartment buildings where, where some of the users are getting inside some of these apartment buildings, and it's terrifying, terrifying the residents that live there, and it's, it's happening, you know, I would suggest, throughout the city. I, I really think it's, it's time to do a communication strategy and get that information out to the public, so they'll know exactly what to do, and, you know, what the timeframes and timelines are to have these needles picked up.
Counsel Ramsey?
That's a great point, Counsel Twill, and with Counsel Yankoff here, who is Chair of Comms, we'll certainly pass that on to her, that, that information, and they would sit down with our Comms Department, and we'll look into it. Thank you very much. That's a great idea.
Okay, just now, Your Worship, question on fire?
Do you want to ask the Deputy Chief? Okay, one more question, the Deputy Chief.
A number of months ago, I brought up the issue of firefighters, full-time firefighters, making a presentation to a standing committee in the Legislative Assembly. And the concern I had at the time, and I still have that concern, is how come, you know, the firefighters for the City of Shell Town, why are we not hearing those concerns in that presentation to, to members of City Council? So we can become much more informed, and we can be much more proactive. I said it at the time, and I'll say it again, I want to do everything I can to help the firefighters, us full-time firefighters, volunteers, you know, what they do is incredible work. They're the face of the city, as well as our Police Department. And I really think, Your Worship, we, we should be talking to our firefighters, see if we can resolve some of the, some of the issues that they have, and some of the concerns that they have. I mean, there's no time like the present in, in meeting with our firefighters.
Counsel Twill, just so you understand, and I know we all understand, that negotiations are now ongoing with the firefighters, actually, our full-time firefighters. Counsel Ramsey, do you want to yield to the Deputy, just to see if that is the case?
I can yield to him, yes, and it is an operational.
It is.
And things like that, and we're not supposed to be involved a whole lot in operation. But I, I can use the Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief, can you just provide some background, just quickly?
Can, can you hear me, Your Worship?
Very clear.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Your Worship, and Counsel Ramsey, and Counsel Duffy. Yeah, that was a presentation by the, the members of the department, well, the full-time members, but it was more of the, the union that organized the presentation, and that was how that was delivered. We do, as management, work daily with our personnel to, to try to address any of their issues, and, and work through it at the, the Worship bench, and we are in negotiation, so there are some matters that are, I guess, confidential at this time.
Okay, and Counsel, Counsel Twill, we'll just leave it at that, because it is a negotiated item. Do you want to go to your resolutions?
Yes, particularly, I believe there's seven?
Eight.
Eight?
There was one added.
Oh, one added on.
Tracy, were they sent to the other councils? So there should be eight resolutions.
Yes.
So, Your Worship, move by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel Duffy, that the request to enter into a development encroachment agreement for the O'Toole Patio to be located in the three perpendicular parking spaces in front of Brent's Fish and Chips at 141 George Street, Shell Town, P I D 342 360, be approved to the end of 2024 season, subject to the annual permit application, and that the mayor is here, or hereby authorized, to execute the standard contract agreements to implement this resolution, Your Worship.
Question, Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, call.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Counsel Bernard, yea or nay?
In favor.
Counsel McCabe?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Okay.
Your Worship, move by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel Duffy, that the request to enter into a development encroachment agreement for the O'Toole Patio to be located in the two parallel parking spaces on King Street, adjacent to Patio of the Appleton Pizza at 45 Queen Street, P I D 335 653, be approved to the end of the 2024 season, subject to annual permit applications, and that the mayor is here, or hereby authorized, to execute standard contract agreements to implement this resolution, Your Worship.
Okay.
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Counsel Bernard, yea or nay?
In favor.
Counsel McCabe?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Thank you.
Your Worship, move by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel Duffy, that the request to enter to a development encroachment agreement for the O'Toole Patio to be located at three, sorry, in the three perpendicular parking spaces in front of Casamia Restaurant at 131 Queen Street, P I D 340 232, be approved to the end of 2024 season, subject to the annual permit application, and that the mayor is here, or hereby authorized, to execute the standard contract agreements to implement this resolution, Your Worship.
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Bernard?
In favor.
Counsel McCabe?
Favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Your Worship, move by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel Duffy, that the request to enter to a development encroachment agreement for the O'Toole Patio to be located in the three perpendicular parking spaces on Queen Street, in front of the Merchant Man Pub at 23 Queen Street, P I D 335 091, be approved to the end of 2024 season, subject to the annual permit applications, and that the mayor is here, or hereby authorized, to execute the standard contract agreements to implement this resolution, Your Worship.
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor? Counsel McCabe?
In favor.
Counsel Bernard?
Favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Your Worship, move by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel Duffy, that the request to enter to a development encroachment agreement for the O'Toole Patio to be located in two perpendicular parking spaces on Queen Street, and two parallel parking spaces on Sydney Street for Sims Corner Steakhouse, 86 Queen Street, P I D 338 145, be approved to the end of 2024 season, subject to the annual permit application, and that the mayor is here, or hereby authorized, to execute the standard contract agreements to implement this resolution, Your Worship.
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel McCabe?
In favor.
Counsel Bernard?
In favor.
Your Worship, move by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel Duffy, that the request to enter to a development encroachment agreement for O'Toole Patio to be located in the three perpendicular parking spaces in front of Churchill Arms Pub and Restaurant at 75 Queen Street, P I D 338 004, be approved to the end of 2024 season, subject to the annual permit applications, and that the mayor is here, or hereby authorized, to execute the standard contract agreement to implement this resolution, Your Worship.
Questions called.
Called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel McCabe?
In favor.
Counsel Bernard?
Favor.
Okay.
Your Worship, move by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel Duffy, that the request to enter to a development encroachment agreement for the O'Toole Patio to be located in the two parallel parking spaces in front of a sleigh maker and Nicholas Gastor Host, 82 Fitzroy Street, at P I D 344 135, be approved to the end of 2024 season, subject to the annual permit applications, and that the mayor is here, or hereby authorized, to execute standard contract agreements to implement this resolution, Your Worship.
Questions called. Called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Bernard, yea or nay?
Favor.
Counsel McCabe?
Favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Okay.
Left booth, base and fire. Thank you very much. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
There was an additional one that was added.
Your Worship, move by Counselor Duffy, second by Counselor Ramsey, that the sole source purchase of three 2022 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor utility vehicles be purchased from Farrell Ford in the amount of $60,540.25 plus HST be accepted at per total purchase price of $181,644.75, and that the funding for these vehicles be allocated in 2022-2023 capital budgets, Your Worship.
Your Worship?
Yes.
We just received this late today from the chief, and what it is, is that we're very long vehicles right now. We lost a few vehicles, but I've been told, through accidents and things along that line, and we're short of vehicles, so this is why this is going through the 2022-23 budget. It's already there, so I think that was...
And you're buying local, love local.
We're not going to get another argument, Your Worship.
Worship, I have a question.
On the purchase of the vehicles?
I have a question concerning the resolution.
Okay, go ahead.
I do too. Okay, am I seconded?
Yes, you are. Counselor McKay?
Thank you.
Counselor Twille, go ahead.
So, if I understand this correctly, this purchase is by the city of Charlestown dealing directly with Farrell Ford?
Yes.
And it has nothing to do with Enterprise PEI, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, so, was this sent out in terms of a request or proposal, or was it advertised in the old pretender process?
Counselor Ramsey, do you want to yield to the chief?
I would yield to the chief because what is stated is that Farrell Ford, or Ford, is the only supplier for this type of vehicle, so chief, maybe you...
May I verify that, chief?
Yes, Your Worship, Farrell Ford or Ford can as the only supplier of the police interceptor SUV, police package, and as Counselor...
Just follow up yours.
Quickly. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chief McConnell. What exactly is the vehicle being used for?
All these vehicles are fleet vehicles for first response, police vehicles.
Okay. Counselor McKay, do you have a question for the chief, or, sorry, for the chair?
You know, I think it's more, I was kind of piggybacking on Counselor Twille because I didn't realize that the fleet vehicles weren't under the enterprise, so they're not under the enterprise fleet management agreement?
No. No. Counselor Ramsey, do you want to yield to the chief?
I will yield, actually, to the police chief there, Counselor McKay, thank you.
Chief, please, can you refer to that, or...
Your Worship, there's certain specifications under the police package vehicles that, my understanding, that Enterprise PEI couldn't provide, they're very specific in their requirements, so those wire vehicles are not included.
They're a specialized vehicle.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor McKay, or someone on the line, someone still has their mic on because there is some feedback, so when you're not speaking, just please turn off your mic. Counselor Yankoff, do you have a question?
Can I follow up to that in a minute, though? I'm interested, I'd just be a little bit more...
Counselor...
Why?
Counselor Yankoff said you could follow up quickly. Go ahead.
I didn't say quickly.
He did, so.
I did not.
Go ahead, Counselor Yankoff.
You don't need to know from Kay.
Counselor McKay?
You know what? Never mind. Thank you.
Counselor Yankoff?
I just had a quick question, so, does this mean, and this, I'll go to the vice chair, and you can defer to Chief McConnell if you wish, so does that mean that going forward, that if we continue on with the fleet management, Enterprise fleet management system, that these vehicles will always be excluded, or is this just for this year only?
As far as I know, as the chief just explained, thank you for your question, Counselor Yankoff, is that there's more specifics with these vehicles, and Enterprise cannot fulfill all those details, am I correct, chief?
Is that right, correct, chief?
The police cruisers are specialized vehicles. We do have other vehicles in our fleet that could fall under the Enterprise criteria, but the police-specific vehicles are very unique.
Yeah. Like, we can't buy a fire engine under the Enterprise fleet management because they don't have fire engines. Okay, go ahead.
Good, thank you very much.
Do you have a comment to add?
So, the fleet management program is looking into what the police vehicles are requesting, but like the chief said, it is a specialized vehicle, but that's not to say in the future that it's something the fleet will look at. It's just that, you know, the value of a police cruiser, especially their interceptors, by the time we're done with them, there's not much left in them, right? So it's kind of a different program altogether, I don't think about the fleet management. Thank you.
Question?
Questions called, sir.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counselor Bernard, yea, nay?
In favor.
Counselor McKay, yea, nay?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Twille?
In favor.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir, thank you very much. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief, thank you very much. So, I'm correct to say Counselor, Counselor Vice Chairman? Correct. Counselor Yankoff?
Thank you, Your Worship.
Do you want to present your report?
The, yes, short and sweet, the council advisory committee met on Friday, February 25th. The draft minutes are included in your package. We do not have any resolutions for council for consideration, however, if anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to answer. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Counselor Yankoff? Okay. See none? Can we go to, is this, no, oh, it is, Parks Recreation, and this is Counselor Bernard, do you have a, Counselor Bernard, are you ready?
Thank you, Your Worship.
Go ahead.
The worship park, Parks Recreation and Leisure met, Your Worship, on February 26th, 26th, and again on March 7th. Don't have any resolutions at this time. Your Worship, I would like to say that, as you can see from the report, we're moving ahead with the resolutions that have been awarded, the award of design consulting services and engineering consulting services for a new replacement arena. Your Worship, the outdoor rinks, as council may or may not know, the outdoor rinks are now closed for the season. I want to say staff did their best and did a very good job of keeping the outdoor rinks at least as long as possible for residents, so we're hoping to get through all of March break, but to get to March break isn't a success. So, Your Worship, other than that, that's my report, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any questions for the chair of Parks Recreation?
Fire boy.
Go ahead there, Counselor. Counselor Twille?
Thank you for your report, Counselor Bernard. Counselor Bernard, in light of the resolution that was passed for the naming rights for the Simmons, Simmons complex, the rink and the pool, the emails that have come in from the Simmons family that are, you know, if you just read their emails, they're quite upset regarding the turn of events. I think, I think we need to take a step back as a council, and Mr. Mayor, I think what we should do now is we should set up a meeting collectively as a council, and we meet with the Simmons family to go over some of the issues they brought to our attention. You know, see, the resolution just seemed to come out of nowhere, and, you know, as pointed out in the press, this has been worked on for about eight months, and there's a lot of issues there, and a lot of concerns, and, you know, I do need, I think we need to take a step back here and reconsider this resolution that was passed by council, and meet with the Simmons family to talk about their legacy, the land that they donated, land that, you know, you have Queen Cheryl, Colonel Gray, the football field, the sporting complex, and just take a second sober thought as to what has transpired here.
Counselor...
So I bring that forward as a recommendation, and I'm hoping that we will act on it as collectively as a council.
Counselor Bernard, just before you answer, Counselor Bernard, Simmons Arena, Simmons Pool, Simmons Fields, will those names remain as part of the complex?
I would think yes, there's been no discussion on that, but I would think that yes, the arena and the pool, I mean, I guess, you know, I can just step back a bit, I mean, this is a new bill, a new facility that's being built, $25.5 million facility, no different than when Cary changed to Bell Line, or City Center changed to East Link, those rooms solicited offers that came, they were discussed, and then they came to council. We just did what we were supposed to do, they came to Parks and Rec. Once Mr. Murphy had confirmed his offer, and we had confirmation of the money to build, that was on March the 3rd, when I got a call from him to confirm everything, and so we did our due diligence, that went to Parks and Rec, to our committee, everything was explained to our committee, it was passed unanimously for our committee, and then to move on to finance. So finance is the financial decision makers of the city, so finance will make the decision whether to go ahead or not go ahead, they agreed to move it ahead to council, so, and did it move to head to council. So, but, you know, we're talking about the name of the complex on the outside, no different than, you could take the Cary facility, but change to Bell Line Center on the outside, we still have like McGlockin 1, I believe is one of the rinks, that were sponsorship names, and McGlockin 2 is a sponsorship name, no different, you know, Simmons Arena, or the pool, or the 23 on the square foot community facilities could be in the new facility, those are all up for meeting rights, and council, that's something that we had discussed, we said that the arena part should stay as Simmons Arena, that's similar to what people recognize as that, Simmons to the pool, so...
Simmons Fields.
Yeah.
Counselor Duffy, do you have a question?
Yes. Thank you, Your Worship.
To the chair?
Uh...
To the chair, sure.
Thank you. Counselor Bernard, the previous speaker to the counselor that spoke previous to that, he is, he, we had, first of all, Counselor Bernard's committee had unanimous vote in favor of the naming, the finance committee had unanimous vote in favor of the naming, council had a vote very strong in naming 72. Now, this counselor in question, we have a code of conduct, and the code of conduct says, under 9.1I, that once council passes a resolution, even though you're not on the side of the resolution, you are to conduct yourself in a proper manner, supporting what the resolution says, and what the previous counselor was doing was suggesting that we move back and have another meeting and consultation, that sort of thing. That's not what I would call supporting the resolution. Thank you, Your Worship.
Your Worship, I'd like to respond.
No, 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 just one second. Counselor Bernard, do you...
No, I'd like to respond.
No, no, Counselor Twille, this is Counselor Bernard's standing committee, Parks and Recreation. Counselor Bernard, can you reply first?
Well, you just did.
No, Counselor Bernard, he directed the question. Counselor Bernard?
Yes, Your Worship?
Did you want to reply to what Counselor Duffy stated?
No, I think what Counselor Duffy said was very clear. All I'm saying is, Parks and Rec did what Parks and Rec all responsibilities were, so we took it to the committee, and it was explained to the committee, and the committee was in grievance 100%, and so it was also agreed, the next step would be moving on to finance, the finance makes the financial decisions, and makes the recommendations, I should say, for, to go to council and not go to council, so it was, as Mr. Duffy said, with finance, and Sarah Cretis said that we could end this, so it went to council. So, you know, for me, I'm not familiar with it.
And as Counselor Duffy stated, Code of Conduct, Section 9, subsection 9.1I, members of council must respect the decision, decisions of council once a decision is rendered. In addition, while respecting the right to have contrary positions and opinions, members of council shall avoid any words or actions that are on duly critical or derogatory towards other members of council, staff, or the city's official position on any topic. Is that the reference back? Okay, Counselor Twille, you can rebut, but we're not going to spend a lot of time on this, just go ahead.
Well, I don't know what Counselor Duffy's talking about, code of conduct, I'm talking about emails that we received from the Simmons family, information that council did not have when the vote was taken. So, I mean, I really don't believe that we made an informed decision, and I feel very strongly about that, and, you know, we've had votes in this chamber before, I just, all you have to look at was Angus Drive, we had an 8-1 vote, but we changed that, and it was a zoning issue, we changed that around, that was okay. Was that a code of conduct? No. So, you know, some members of council didn't think we had enough information, whether I agree or disagree, that was okay, so we seem to, you know, use rules when they're convenient, when they're not convenient, we're not going to use them, and I really think it's absurd for Counselor Duffy to talk about a code of conduct when we're talking about the legacy. He must talk code of conduct, that's great. I'm talking about the legacy of the Simmons family, and I respect for the Simmons family, and I really believe, Your Worship, I think it would be much more insightful if council met with the Simmons family, we owe them that much, to sit down and at least have a discussion with them, and to see, you know, some of the issues, so council can have all of the information. I'm not even critical, I'm just pointing out some of the deficiencies in the process.
Counselor Twille? Counselor Bernard, Counselor Bernard? Counselor Bernard, just one second. Counselor Bernard, can you please take this back to Parks and Recreation to discuss it? And Counselor Bernard, again, Simmons Arena, Simmons Pool, and Simmons Fields will remain as named, correct?
Yes, so I'm not sure why, what I'm taking back from the committee.
Well, just take back what is being brought up here by Counselor Twille.
Your Worship, I asked for council to meet with the Simmons family.
Counselor Twille, it has to go through the appropriate standing committee, and the appropriate standing...
Council made a decision, Your Worship, the council owns it now.
Counselor Twille, the appropriate standing committee is Parks, Recreation, and Leisure. Okay, let's move on, guys. Water and wastewater, or water and sewer, Counselor Twille?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. We had a little tight one here, the water and sewer utility committee did meet this month, on March 3rd, where we discussed our operational budget in a very long length, so I also have one resolution for your consideration today, and one of our staff members also brought me up to date on a Charlestown water school, so I'd just like to have a quick paragraph, we'll try to be quick on it. So Charlestown is once again participating with the town of Stratford to host water school. After a successful run in 2019 during water school, grade five students attend for a day-long field trip where they split the time between water conservation and watershed protection learning activities. The school will be running from March 28th to April 8th at the Stratford Emergency Services Building. Charlestown schools will be going April 4th to the 7th, and staff are working with Stratford to plan a separate session that members of council and the media will be able to attend to experience this great learning activity. Schools attending are West Kent Elementary, St. Jean Elementary, Lucy Montgomery Elementary, and Parkdale Elementary. All these elementary schools in town were contacted, and I should say, all the schools, elementary schools in town were contacted, and provided the opportunity to register on a first column, first serve basis, so these were the four selected that applied first, so it's exciting news for some grade five P10, and hopefully they'll learn a lot from staff, so if anybody has any questions, I'll answer them as best I can. Thank you.
Any questions? No. Counselor Bernard, Counselor Twille, Counselor McKay? Please do.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bernard, your report, just want to say a shout-out to the utility crews, there was a break on Linden Avenue the other day, and I ended up bothering Mike Pigott, which I didn't know was in Florida, so hats off to him, he actually got the crew there even though he was in Florida, so technology does work, but I just want to say thank you to them, and pass on how good a job they did, and they were there immediately, and very professional. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm sure staff would appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Klein?
Yes, sir.
Print Street School had the water school twice, and it was a big success, and they loved the bubble gum that they bring to the meetings.
Don't you ask like the...
But could I just ask one, make one comment? I did bring it up at our last meeting about a water audit program, are we looking at that as a possibility to look at our meters and to see if our system is working properly? And it's been provided free in other jurisdictions?
Yes, I see the sign over in Stratford, and we discussed it at the last committee meeting, and our manager was going to look into it for us to see where we're going to go, so we will bring it back to this month, and we'll put it on the agenda to talk about how far we're going with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you want to read the resolution?
Yes, Your Worship, move by Counselor Drone, second by Counselor Twille, that the conditional management plan is for the management of shellfish harvesting in conditionally managed harvest areas adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant and collection systems located in Charlestown, and further that the city of Charlestown adopt the updated conditional management plan as attached, Your Worship.
Okay. Questions called.
I have a question.
We have a question from Counselor Yankoff.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Drone, for your report. The conditional management plan, I noticed here, notes that the year's changed the agreement, including noting that Stratford wastewater flows are now treated after Charlestown Pollution Control Plant, and that that will be revised in this attached copy, is that the only revision to the conditional management plan?
I'm not 100% sure, there were some updates on it, so, you know, I can't say that that's the only one that they're looking at.
And Mr. McKeown is online, if he'd help you with it.
Is Mr. McKeown on?
Okay.
Do you want to...
Yeah, I'd certainly yield to Mr. McKeown to go through this lengthy report and to answer the question, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, the only change really is that, a note in there that we do manage the wastewater from Stratford, there's also a couple of lift stations that were updated, that the East World, the lift station is also now noted in the report. The general recording requirements are the same, the big change took place last year where we have gone to an online recording system rather than a fax-based system.
A question, Counselor Yankoff?
Just more of a follow-up observation. Normally, when we are voting on an updated plan, we're usually given the old one, so we can see exactly what we're voting on, and I realize that this is just a very, you know, a few small changes, you know, and I'm happy to sort this, and, you know, and happy for the clarification from Mr. McKeown, but I do think that when we're voting on these, we should be seeing what we're actually voting on from previous...
What's that? Is it in the report?
Yes.
Did you, there is a report that went with that?
I will consider that, My apologies, but...
Mr. McKeown? Mr. McKeown, did you hear that?
Yes.
Mr. McKeown?
Did you hear me?
Okay, some, some, some counselors have their mics on? Some counselors... Some counselors-
Not a policy, so that's probably why it's not brought here with the highlighting. I mean, it still could be, it still could be, but yeah.
Good point.
But anyway, something perhaps, perhaps the chair can take back and-
Can Richard hear us?
Lord.
Richard, can you hear us?
Yes, the feedback has, so I do have a marked up copy of the agreement that is circulated. It could be provided in the future. But as noted, it's a resolution and the agreement needs to be there as it will be signed, is my understanding, but we can include a marked up copy as well in the future.
Is that all right, Counselor Yankoff? Good point. No, no, because changes in human resources, you see the before and the after. Okay. Question called. Any others? Good. All those who favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Counselor McCain, yea or nay?
In favor.
Counselor Bernard?
In favor.
Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Okay, eight, zero. Okay, just one second, sir. And Counselor McCain. Thank you, sir. Public Works?
Thank you very much, your worship. Public Works, our communication committee met on February 23rd. The draft meeting, including your packing, the civic board of persons with disabilities have not met, but hopefully, now that the bill will be open, we'll be, we'll be carrying that on again. So there's no minutes for those. And I do have two resolutions put forward and any questions, you can turn it all. Can I answer? Thank you.
Questions?
I have a question, your worship.
Counselor Twill, please take your question.
Thank you. Counselor McCloud, thank you for your report. About a year ago, the residents in the Walton Drive area went public and talked about how unsafe it is to cross Allen Street over to the north side of Allen Street. Lack of sidewalks, a lack of lighting, and I believe they requested, I stand to be corrected, believe they requested flashing lights which would illustrate to the vehicle traffic, which is extremely intense on Allen Street. That, you know, pedestrians are trying to cross Allen Street in the Walton Drive intersection. My question is, and maybe you would go to Scott Adams, can you tell me what work has been accomplished since that was brought up a year ago? I mean, I did bring it up two or three times and wonder if Mr. Adams can enlighten council as to what work has been done and what the residents can look forward to in terms of enhancement and improvements from a safety and security perspective.
Thank you very much, Counselor Twill. I will yield, I will say that, you know, we're looking at the whole street, just not that intersection. I believe that there's issues all the way along there from the trail all the way, you know, up to Tim Hortons. So I believe there's a study ongoing, but I'll let Mr. Adams speak on that. Thank you for your question.
Mr. Adams?
Yes, your worship, thank you. So just to highlight, we haven't been able to start the study. The first step off is we need to count the pedestrians crossing and the vehicles interacting with that. That's kind of the first step we need to, and it's on our radar to get that done this year when we, once the weather improves, so that's when we get a clear picture of the number of pedestrians we're looking at for crossing at this rotation. And that will help us determine a best course of action for intersection treatment.
Follow-up, your worship.
Go ahead, sir.
Is it regarding how many, is your analysis, Scott, is it based on how many people are crossing Allen Street at that intersection or improving the intersection so that more pedestrians will feel a lot safer crossing that street? Because in some cases, it's five lanes on Allen Street and that traffic is extremely intense and they're going quite fast. So I'm looking to, I'm looking for a number of different enhancement improvements. A, slow the traffic down. B, make it safe for the pedestrian traffic to be able to cross Allen Street in a very safe manner and that the vehicle traffic is very well aware they need to slow down and, you know, look at some of the, some of the deterrence, could be, like I said, could be flashing lights. And then the lack of sidewalk on the north side, I mean, those recommendations came from the residents. And so I'm to take it, nothing's happened over the last year. So please tell me what the process is so I can communicate that with the residents.
Just, Counselor Twill, you have to ask the question to the chair. Chair, you want to answer first?
Yeah, I'll just start off and then I will yield again. Thank you, Counselor Twill. So the issue there to begin with is, you're right, there's a lot of movement, a lot of moving parts to that two intersections or, you know, like there's the, the whole issue with Sobeys Corner, you know, and the close proximity of the next sidewalk on Walton Drive. So, you know, there's a lot happening and I don't think one little part is going to fix it. I think an overall view of what Mr. Adams is saying has got to happen and I believe he has that ongoing this summer, but I'll let him finish. Thank you.
Scott, Stradams?
Thank you, your worship. So yes, there are a number of pieces to look at when we do study. And also we have to remember too that then we have to determine where that's priority in terms of construction or where it takes priority in terms of other projects as well. Because we get requests every year to look at various intersections, various crossings. And we would love to be able to upgrade them as soon as the request can be, but again, just budgets, things are very plentiful to make major changes to infrastructure like that. That's another piece of the plan too that we also have to look at, what the treatment is going to come by and what's in context. So it's a lot of pieces to go to such looking at that. And like I say, we do intend to go on the radar for this year to start looking at some of those changes.
So just a follow-up, your worship. When can I expect an update on the analysis, Scott? So again, the residents can be informed and be involved with the, with the process.
Go ahead, Scott. Stradams?
Uh, your worship, at this time, I can't give a timeframe as of late now. Just, it's just the value they're covering for next year in the term. We are, we're still trying to get our construction program out the door at this time and then walk that kind of one way, then we start looking at these pieces. So I still want to commit to a certain timeframe just at this moment until we know where we're at the next month or so.
Should we begin, Scott?
No, no, no. Counselor Twill, you've already asked. He has the information, he'll get back to you. Let's just get to the resolutions. I'll do the resolution first.
Your worship, moved by Counselor McCloud, second by Counselor Duffy, that as per the conditions of the public request for quotations for the poll mounted crisis displays, the submission of classic displays in the amount of $17,618.00 plus all political taxes be accepted, your worship.
Okay. Question? Questions called. Okay, all those who favor, please raise your hand. Counselor Bernard, yea or nay?
In favor.
Counselor McCain, yea or nay?
Yes, in favor.
Counselor Twill?
I'm in favor. I just have a question, your worship, on the resolution. And tell me where the displays are going to be installed at?
Yeah. Mr. Scott, Mr. Adams, can you follow up with that?
Your worship, yes, I can. So these are-
No, Scott. Scott, you can follow up because it's, a point of order was already called, that the vote was on, could you follow up with Counselor Twill?
Certainly.
Eight, zero. Did you vote, Counselor Twill? Yea or nay?
Yeah, one other question, may I answer?
No.
Answer my question.
He's going to follow up with you.
Oh, I can't answer right now?
No, because the resolution was taking place.
Your worship, moved by Counselor McCloud, second by Counselor Duffy, that as per the conditions on the public request for quotations for supply and delivery of lighting equipment, intersection lighting for the submission of Mallard Forest Street equipment in the amount of $108,902.00 plus political taxes be accepted and that this work will all be carried out in the 2022-23 Public Works capital budget program, your worship.
Questions called. Questions called. All those who favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Counselor Bernard, yea or nay?
In favor.
Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor McCain?
In favor.
Okay, eight, zero. That's it, sir?
Just want to conclude, just want to make note as well, the public work staff, how rigorous of a winner it was on land and equipment and how good a job they've done. And also would like to just mention that Mr. McKinnon is having surgery and hope all the best for him moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Yankoff?
Thank you, and thank you for your report, Counselor McCloud. I just wondered if there's, I'm getting a lot, you know, from the residents, particularly in Moore and Shore, throughout the entire city as well. Are we, do we have a spring cleanup kind of initiative? There's just a lot of, lot of garbage on the streets and I realize the snow is melting, so it's appearing quickly and it's just, it's just kind of coming to a head now. I'm just wondering if there's a plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Yankoff. As, yes, it was mentioned in our report, I believe Scott Adams can follow up with this as well, but I believe we're, we do what we can with the staff that's on right now. We're waiting, we're waiting for the other staff to come on, so, but it is, you're right, I think it's Morton that the staff there are taking over that and if they have the time, please stop and pick up garbage. But Scott, if you want to finish that, there is quite a bit around, yes.
Thank you, your worship. Now, I, Counselor McCloud, we did too, yes, but since now we're kind of out of the tail end of the snowstorm, our staff are starting to do some cleanup on the resources we currently have and then over the next, within the next month, we'll start to see some of our seasonal staff come back and we'll see a big improvement as they start to return.
And Counselor Yankoff, just all over the city, it's not just downtown, it's everywhere. It's, and it's the mask, mask are everywhere and every day I'm in front of the city hall picking up garbage.
But if I may just suggest that, you know, please feel free to email Scott Adams with any areas that seem to be of real concern and the staff will do the best again in getting it picked up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing that up. Okay, that's it. Economic Development?
Uh, thank you. Before, before I actually, sorry, it's really hard for me sometimes to be on the phone to try and jump in or make a comment, but I do want to make a comment on something that was already discussed in parks and more for the public record purpose and for me to be able to understand the process because we indicated that it was going to go back to parks, I think you said? Was that what you said, your worship?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, well, but we already pushed it from parks into finance and from finance on to council. So I do agree with Counselor Twill, if there's going to be further discussion, it would probably be outside all of council to hear that discussion versus it just going through a committee at this point. So I didn't get a chance to jump in and ask or make my comment at that time, but I think that that is very important if we're going to, and morally and actually, I think it is good, it's a good idea for the family to have the opportunity to do that. Anyway, I just wanted that to-
Counsel, Counselor McCain, it's a parks, it was initiated by Parks, Recreation, and Leisure. That's why, no, no, let me, let me just finish. And I believe that that's where it goes back to. And if there's not a satisfactory response from that committee, I'm sure it'll be brought up at a special meeting of council or a regular monthly meeting of council. Again, I've been told that sometimes I don't respect the standing committees. Now I'm trying to respect, respect the standing committees because this is, no, this is an area that came, was initiated by this standing committee. So that's why I made that statement.
I understood from parks that it moved on to finance, so I just assumed it would go back to, if it's been through that many committees, it would be nice if people that don't sit on those committees at least had the opportunity to hear the family's thoughts and concerns.
Yeah, but it'll go back as a discussion to the-
I agree.
I know we've moved on and I'm sorry, but I didn't get a chance to jump in at the appropriate time.
Economic Development.
My report, we met on February 15th. The Arts Advisory Board met on February 22nd. The minutes are in your package. I know for me, it's challenging to hear everybody speaking in the chamber, so I've asked Vice Chair Kevin Ramsey to provide the report and update from the staff, if that's okay? If there's questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you. So Counselor, no one's been tripping a quadruped. Counselor Ramsey, can you give the report?
We're going to give it a shot, your worship. Thank you very much. And thank you, Counselor McCain. There's just three or four bullets that I received today, late this afternoon. Last week brought, it brought great news to the Charlestown Bioscience Sector with the federal government through a COA announcing $3 million, $835 million investment into initiatives, training and manufacturing. And then recently, your worship, you and May Long participated in Charlestown, in the greater Charlestown area, Chamber of Commerce, economic recovery. And I believe I read today, you were going, it's going tomorrow, yes. Yes. The Steel Timber Sports Championship Series announced earlier this month and the 2022 trophy will be held in Charlestown that was awarded in 2022. These events will be held during NAAL Day Week in July 29th to the 31st. Next week, it brings back U-Sports. As we all know, our UPI women's hockey team is hosting it. They can put out, you know, one game series, but it starts, I believe, a week from today. And they're the host of it and that's for all the national teams, the four or five national teams for the women's sport. So if anyone is around, you should try and go see that. What else we got here? Tourism PGI recently unveiled a new strategy to guide the tourism industries through the 2022-2023 seasons. The outline includes a recovery potential, setting in motion higher tourism revenue for the next two years and shift tourism. And then the biggest, not the biggest news, one of the biggest news is, is that the cruise ships will be starting again in Charlestown. And then after a two-year pause, there will be 72 cruise ships expected in the 2022 season, which will kick off April 22nd. And I believe they run around November, late November, along that line. So that's great news for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor McCain, do you want to add any, any, any information to Counselor Ramsey's report for your committee?
You know what, thank you very much, Counselor Ramsey, for taking the time to discuss with me today.
Very welcome. Any questions? No questions? Any resolutions? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. Thank you, Counselor McCain. Moving on to environment sustainability, Counselor Twill? Can you hear us, Counselor Twill?
Thank you, your worship. Members of council, the report is in your package and if there's any questions or any concerns, I'll do my best. I'm not sure if Ramona's with us to feed me and I can't answer tonight, I'll definitely bring back your concerns and questions to the committee and you're more than welcome to attend our committee meeting. Thank you, your worship.
I believe our manager for environment sustainability is not on? Oh, she's not online, Counselor McCain?
No, he knew that.
Any questions?
No, I have a-
Go ahead.
Counselor Twill, for your report, just, I was reading your report there on the crows. I think we're at a point now where there's not too many parks in the city that the crows are not taken home with. I am getting frequent calls in the War II area between just them nesting and people feeding. You know, I did have wild obstacles, see a couple, but it's, you know, terribly hard to police and to deal with, but I just thought it raised that concern that, I know we've been trying to deal with this for a long time and I just hope that we keep it on the burn and see, and we show to other municipalities, see what they're doing, but there's got to be something we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCloud. Excellent question. It's definitely, you know, it's a major concern in our city and the effect of neighborhoods, you know, some of the neighborhoods in here ward, certainly Ward 4. You know, the other day I was driving by Simmons, Simmons Field and I'm telling you, I never saw so many crows in my life. I thought the Pioneer Cemetery was wicked. I mean, they were just everywhere. And I think, your worship, we need to, I know staff has provided information to our constituents. We might have to go a step further and I think it's an issue that council collectively needs to discuss. Maybe we can bring in some, you know, some, some experts that deal with, deal with the crow, crow, crow problem in our city. We need to engage further with fish and wildlife and I'm always talking about a jurisdictional scan, see what other municipalities have done, but no, McCloud is, Counselor McCloud is correct. You know, it's a major issue in our city, it's extremely on- Kevin Ramsey to provide the report and updates from the staff, if that's okay?
Yes.
If you have questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you. So, Counselor, no one's been tripping quadrupled. Counsel Ramsey, can you give the report?
We're gonna give it a shot, your worship.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Counsel McCabe. There's just three or four bullets that I received today, late this afternoon. Last week brought, it brought great news to the Sherwoodham biosector, bioscience sector, with the federal government through a call announcing three million, eight, three million, eight hundred and thirty-five million dollars investment into initiatives, training and manufacturing. And then recently, your worship, you and May Long participated in Sherwoodham, in the Greater Sherwoodham area, labor governments, economic recovery. And I believe I read today, you were going, it's going tomorrow.
Yes.
Yes. The Steel Timber Sports Championship Series announced earlier this month, and, and the twenty twenty-two, what is it, trophy will be held in Sherwoodham that was awarded in twenty twenty-two. These events will be held during Hallow Day weekend, July twenty-ninth to the thirty-first. Next week, it brings back to you sports. As we all know, our UPI women's hockey team is hosting it, they could put out, you know, one game series, but it starts, I believe, a week from today, and they're the host of it, and that's for all the national teams, the four or five national teams for the women's sports, so if anyone was around, then you should try and go see that. Uh, what else we got here? Tourism P E I recently unveiled a new strategy to guide the tourism industry through the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three seasons. The line includes a recovery prudential, setting in motion higher tourism revenue for the next two years, and shift tourism. And then the biggest, not the biggest news, one of the biggest news is, is that the cruise ships will be starting again in Sherwoodham. And after a two-year pause, and there's seventy-two cruise ships are expected in the twenty twenty-two season, which will kick off April twenty-second, and I believe they run around November, late November, along that line, so that's great news for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel McCabe, do you want to add any, any, any information to Counsel Ramsey's report for your committee?
You know what, thank you very much, Counsel Ramsey, for taking the time to be back for me today.
Very welcome.
Any questions? No questions. Any resolutions? Okay. Thank you, Counsel Ramsey, thank you, Counsel McCabe. We're moving on to environment sustainability. Counsel Twill. Can you hear us, Counsel Twill?
Thank you, your worship. Members of council, the report is in your package, and if there's any questions or any concerns, I'll do my best. I'm not sure if Ramona's with us tonight to feed me, and I can't answer tonight, I'll definitely bring back your concerns and questions to the committee, and you're more than welcome to attend our committee meeting. Thank you, your worship.
I believe our manager for environment sustainability is not on? Oh, she's not online, Counsel Twill.
No, he, he knows that.
Any questions?
No, I have...
Go ahead.
Counsel McLeod. Counsel Twill, for your report, just, I was reading your report there on the crows. I think we're at a point now where there's not too many parts of the city that the crows are not taken home with. I am getting frequent calls in the War Two area, between just them nesting and people feeding, you know, I did have a wild obstacle see a couple, but it's, you know, terribly hard to police and to deal with, but, but I just thought it raised that concern that, I know we've been trying to deal with this for a long time, and I just hope that we keep it on the burn, and see, and reach out to other municipalities, see what they're doing, but there's gotta be something we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McLeod, excellent question. It's definitely, you know, it's a major concern in our city, and, and the effect at neighborhoods, you know, some of the neighborhoods are near war, certainly war poor, you know, the other day I was driving by Simmons, Simmons Field, and I'm telling you, I never saw so many crows in my life. I thought the Pioneer Cemetery was, was wicked, I mean, they were just everywhere, and I think, your worship, we need to, I know staff has provided information to our constituents, we might have to go a step further, and I think it's an issue that council collectively needs to discuss, maybe we can bring in some, you know, some, some experts that, that deal with, deal with the crow, crow, crow problem in our city. We need to engage further with fish and wildlife, and I'm always talking about a jurisdictional scam, see what other municipalities have done, but, no, McLeod is, Counsel McLeod is correct. You know, it's a major issue in our city, it's extremely unhealthy, and a lot of residents are intimidated by the crows, and that's not overstating it, that's accurate. So, I think Counsel McLeod, we're gonna bring this back to the committee again, and you're welcome to join our committee meeting for discussions, and Mister Mayor, maybe we need to put it on the, on the agenda for council discussion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I have another question here from Counsel Ramsey, he's just signing off a...
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Twill, for your report, and just, I got a few phone calls from dead crows that are on private property, so I basically didn't know what to do with it either, and they said, I thought you went to Public Works and they would pick it up, but our Public Works is not picking them up on private property anymore. I believe they have to phone Fish and Wildlife because of the avian flu that's going around in them right now, so we're not allowing our, our staff to go on private property to do it, and in fact, there's two or three phone calls for your ward that I received that I, I don't know why they phoned me, but anyway, they must know me, but that's how, I, I just wanted to bring that up for your attention.
Thanks, thank you, Counsel Ramsey, I think you raised an excellent point. I know some residents, when, when, when a lot of the crows were found down on their properties, contacted the Vet College, and the Vet College would go out and, and pick up the crows and do an analysis and assessment on, on the crows, so I think maybe what we need to do too, Counsel Ramsey, is have further discussions with the Vet College, and maybe, maybe embark upon a communication strategy, so our residents know who to phone, whether it's Fish and Wildlife or, or the Vet College, but that's, those questions are valid, and I think we need to close the gap when it comes to communications, what can be done when dead crows are found on properties of our residents.
Thank you.
Don't touch them.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. No resolutions, Mister, Mister Kelly?
No.
No resolutions. Okay. Next is strategic priorities. Counsel Ramsey, you're...
Well, all right.
Three, three rolls tonight.
Yeah, I need to tell you, the strategic priorities and intergovernmental cooperation committee met Thursday, February twenty-fourth, the draft minutes are in your package, the youth engagement advisory committee met on February tenth, and the draft minutes are also included in your package. There is one resolution for, for your consideration, worship, and the first reading to amend the election bylaw. Any questions? We will certainly try and answer. Thank you.
So, Mister Kelly, on the first resolution, you're gonna read that aloud, I take it?
Yes, worship.
Do you want to read that aloud first?
Yes, worship. Moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counsel Dron, whereas the Province of Quebec's Bill Twenty-One, an act respecting the latency of the state, contravening section two fundamental freedoms, subsection A and B of the Canada Act of nineteen eighty-two, Charter of Rights and Freedoms, A, freedom of conscience and religion, B, freedom of thought, belief, opinions, and expression, including freedom of the press and other media or communication, and section fifteen, equality of rights, subsection one, where it states every individual is equal before and under the law, and has the right to the equal protection and the equal benefit of the law without discrimination, and in particular, without discrimination based upon race, national or ethnic origin, color, religion, sex, age, or mental, physical disability, whereas the city of Sherwoodham is a vibrant multicultural community, and strongly supports and embraces diversity, inclusivity, and its cultural heritage, and whereas Canadian cities, including the office of the mayor of Montreal and other prominent Quebecers, oppose Bill Twenty-One, therefore be resolved that the city of Sherwoodham stand in solidarity with many other Canadian mayors and councils, including the mayor of Montreal, to affirm our opposition to Quebec's Bill Twenty-One, and be further resolved that the city of Sherwoodham call on the government and Parliament of Canada, challenging Quebec's Bill Twenty-One at the Supreme Court of Canada.
Your worship?
Yes, sir. Counsel Twill, did you, did you want to ask the chair? Go ahead.
Your worship, I'd like to make an amendment, friendly amendment, to the resolution.
What part, sir?
Pardon me?
What part, like?
I'd like to make an amendment to, to the resolution, that the resolution also be forwarded on to the province of Prince Edward Island, for the province to be involved in the process lobbying the, the province of, of Quebec. Also, I'd like this resolution be forwarded on to the P E I Federation municipalities for further discussions and support, as well as to Member of Parliament, Sean Casey.
Okay. So, Mister Kelly, so the friendly amendment would be, Counsel Twill, could you?
To be forwarded to the province, so...
Yeah, so, would it be further resolved, the city of Sherwoodham calling the government and Parliament of Canada, challenging?
And, and province of P E I.
Province of P E I, and?
F C M.
F C M, forty.
F P I, worship.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you, can you make that adjustment? But we'll have to, that's a friendly amendment, Counsel Twill?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
So we'll have to vote on that first, do you, do you have a seconder?
Now, your worship, are we sure that those organizations did not already receive this?
Counsel Duffy?
Good question.
That's a good ques, I, I know that the province is not, has not dealt with it, and as for F P E I N, if it's in the resolution, all it is is just a, a repeat request, but I, I can tell you, Summer Side, the city of Summer Side, will be adopting the same resolution next month, or next, next Monday.
It's basically throwing our, our support for the city of Sherwoodham behind to oppose this bill, because of the residents, and we, we think it's a very good, it's a very good resolution, because it shows equality and, and, you know, for race and everything that, I mean, you shouldn't be punished on your race, your background, or any...
On your dress.
So we, we think it'd be, it's good, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
But we're not the only city that's doing it either.
No, no, number of cities, right.
Like, there is a number of cities around.
But your worship, my point is that they asked us for our opinion, and we're giving them our opinion, period.
Correct.
So, yes, I don't know why, okay.
Counsel Duffy, I, I think what's going on is that Quebec is saying that, you know, it's a Quebec issue, but it's the Charter of Rights and Freedoms under the Canada, Canada Act of nineteen eighty-two, so it's, it's a federal issue.
Yes.
And I know you understand, you, you understand the gravity of it, but Quebec's saying it's just a Quebec problem. Well, no, it's, it's, it's a constitutional issue.
Yeah, it's a culture problem. So who said this to us?
This was brought to us by BIPOC, which is the, the, BIPOC is Counsel Yankoff, just help me with it, Black, Indigenous, people of color, Osho, and there were at least two members of our community that forwarded this to us as, as, to get our support, but they were also asking, similar to what other municipalities are doing, they're providing monies for legal support, we just don't have the capacity, the fiscal capacity to do that. I think we're showing support that we oppose Bill Twenty-One, Quebec Bill Twenty-One, and how it contravenes two, two parts of the, two parts of the Constitution Act of nineteen eighty-two, sections two and sections fifty, sections two and fifteen. Yeah. So, again, it's, I, I, I don't think we want to get into legal issues, that's a, that's beyond our means, and I don't think we want to get into at this point in time. Counsel Twill, so he's gonna read the friendly amendment, do you have a seconder?
Well, the amendment is, once again...
He's got it.
Is, is to, to send the resolution for support to the provincial government, you know, may, maybe this is a topic and an issue that could be discussed at a first ministers conference. Prince Edward Island Federation municipalities believe the resolution should be sent there for further discussion for all seventy-five municipalities, to have that discussion with the board representing all those municipalities, and forwarding a letter on as well, and to City of Sherwoodham's Member of Parliament, Sean Casey.
So, do you want to read that? He's gonna read it.
After the, therefore, sorry, after, before it's, be, be it further resolved that the city of Sherwoodham call on the government and Parliament of Canada, challenges to the Quebec's Bill Twenty-One at the Supreme Court of Canada, and also forward to the province of P E I and F P I M for the review and support.
Okay. I think, Mister...
That's correct.
Mister Kelly, I think it has to be, be it further resolved, you have to...
There, there is a...
I know, but you can add another one. You can put as many as you want there, if you want. Okay, we need a seconder for the friendly amendment, seconded by Counsel Yankoff. Question?
Questions called, sir.
Okay. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Okay. Counsel Bernard, yea your name.
Agreed.
Counsel McCabe?
Yes.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Okay. So, the resolution, we'll go to the resolution now, the main resolution, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the main resolution, please put up your hand. Counsel Bernard? Counsel McCabe?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Okay. Do you have another resolution, sir, or a second reading?
Yes, worship.
I'll fix that up. So, Counsel Ramsey, there's just a second reading of the first reading.
First reading, worship.
So it's in the city...
First reading, you're men, and actually...
Close and connected person.
So it's, and you please, the motion being forwarded to the province, that's right.
Okay. Kate, do you want to do the first reading?
Yes, worship. Your worship, City of Sherwoodham election bylaw, amending bylaw two oh one eight dash oh eight dash B, to amend the City of Sherwoodham election bylaw, to reflect recent revisions to municipal elections regulations whereby counties and closely connected persons cannot be election officials, moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counsel Dron, be resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Sherwoodham election bylaw be read for a first time, your worship.
Shall it pass?
Pass, pass, pass.
Counsel Bernard, yea your name.
Pass.
Counsel McCabe?
Yes.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Your worship, moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counsel Dron, be resolved that the bylaw be now approved as a city bylaw, and that be entitled the City of Sherwoodham election bylaw, and that be read a second time at the next committee of council, worship.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel McCabe?
In favor.
And Counsel Bernard?
Uh...
Okay. Is that it, sir?
Yes, worship.
That's it? Thank you. Counsel Ramsey?
You're very welcome, your worship.
So, finance audit, geez, finance minister drew.
I'll have that out.
We'll have to buy new shoes.
Yes. Thank you, worship. Finance audit and Senator Committee, we met March ninth, and we previewed it met February twenty-eighth. The minutes are in your package, there is one resolution. A few highlights here, the Finance Committee met on March ninth and had one resolution to be forward, proposed parkland for Horseshoe Hill Estates. The details are in the council package, as you all received. Over the past couple of weeks, the Finance Committee has met and reviewed drafts of the operating budget. There is an online open house scheduled for Thursday, March seventeenth, so citizens can provide comments on their priority, priorities for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. The Finance Committee will be meeting again on Monday, March twenty-first, for further discussion on the operating budget. March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two is when it is expected the council will pass the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three operating budget, worship. Any questions, we'll try and answer them. Thank you.
Any questions?
Worship, moved by Counsel Duffy, seconded by Counsel Ramsey, that the city of Sherwoodham accepts the developers' proposed parkland dedication of one point five three acres for phase four and previous phase three of the Horseshoe Hills Estates subdivision, P I D six eight four five one four, as indicated on the attached subdivision site development plan, and that the plan department will enter into a development agreement with the developership.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Twill, yea your name.
In favor.
Counsel McCabe?
In favor.
Counsel Bernard?
In favor.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Counsel Yankoff, your report's next, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. Human Resources, Communication, and the International Committee, our report is here in your package, we met on the fourteen, our, sorry, we met on March first, and the, the minutes are in your package, we don't have any resolutions, but I did just want to apologize that I did notice that although the minutes are here, the Communications Report, as well as the Human Resources update, were not included in the package, so I did have Bethany email them up this evening, so they're probably in your inbox now, so everyone does have them, so I'm not sure if you want, if it's okay to still receive this, this committee report or not, but I did forward those along for everyone to, to review.
Is that already?
It was only about an hour ago, so I understand if you haven't had a chance.
Counsel Dron, no problem with that?
No.
No? Counsel Twill, no problem with that?
You know what, your worship, I couldn't hear Counsel Alain, I'm sorry.
Counsel Yankoff, could you please repeat it and just speak louder?
Counsel Twill, when I had, I noticed that my minutes are included in the package for Human Resources, but the, the two reports from our manager of H R and our manager of Communications had not been included, so I had them emailed out during the meeting, so we've had a chance to review those over the weekend. I didn't see any highlighted items that I would like to bring to your attention, however, I did feel important that all of council did see those two reports.
Is that good, Counsel Twill?
Yes, thank you.
Are you all right with the email that was sent out to you?
Yes, she said yes.
Okay. And Counsel McCabe, no problem, Counsel Bernard, no problem. Okay. Good? That's it?
If any, if there's any questions, I can do my best to answer them.
Okay. To business.
No questions.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, motion moved, seconded by Counsel Dron, seconded by Counsel Yankoff, all those in favor. Counsel McCabe, yea your name.
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel Bernard?
See you later.
Okay. Have a good night. Take care.
Good night.
Good night.